Good evening. As a preliminary matter, this is Steven Chambers, the Vice Chair of the Auburn Planning Board. Permit me to confirm that all members are present and can hear me. Ron Brooks?
Present.
Todd Green?
Present.
Duarkash Nealan?
Present.
Town officials and employees participating, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Town Planner Adam Menard?
Yeah.
Staff Assistant Rachel Pressey?
Yeah.
Good evening. This is the open meeting of the Town of Auburn Planning Board for February eighth, Tuesday, February eighth, two thousand twenty-two. Now call to order at seven P M. This meeting is being conducted both in person and remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March twelfth, two thousand twenty, and extended on June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-one. For this meeting, the Planning Board is convening in person and by remote access. For the public to join the meeting remotely by telephone, call one three one two seven five seven three one two one and enter access code one three three seven four seven four seven seven. Or the public can join via computer at go to meeting dot com backslash join backslash one three three seven four seven four seven seven. The remote access information has been posted on the town's website identifying how the public may join. Please note that this meeting is being recorded by Auburn Cable Television. Is there anyone here in the audience tonight that is recording this meeting? Accordingly, those members of the Planning Board, employees and members of the public who participate remotely, please be aware that other folks may be able to see you, and please take care not to share your screen of your computer or anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. Please rise and join us in the salute to the flag.
Let's legion, let's divide. The public, the public always stands, one nation, one God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright. Does that mean?
Oh, I do.
All supporting materials have been provided to the members of this body are available on the town's website. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Meeting, we are now turning to the first item on the agenda. Before we do, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. I, Vice Chair of the Board, will introduce each speaker on the agenda. After they conclude their remarks, the Vice Chair will go down the line of members inviting each by name to provide any comments, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to speak clearly and into the microphone in the way that helps generate accurate minutes. I'd like to remind the audience, applicants, town administration, of each and each of the Planning Board members to please refrain from asking questions in regards to all matters discussed this evening without first being granted my consent. Finally, each meeting, each vote will be taken by a roll call vote this evening. Alright. If technical difficulties arise, the Vice Chair will suspend the meeting while attempts are made to resolve the issue. Keep accurate minutes, noting any disconnection and reconnection. Now, turning to the first item on the agenda. So, seven P M, applicant Auburn School Department requesting site plan approval under section nine point four of the Auburn zoning bylaw for expanding parking area and driveway with other site improvements at thirty-five Swanson Road. Auburn Mass, Auburn Mass map thirty-two parcel fifty-one. Do we have anyone representing the applicant?
Need to open the hearing.
We have a motion to open it.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Second. Alright, all those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Duarkash?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Chambers, as in our, the meeting is now open. Please introduce yourself.
Hi, good evening. I'm Ronald Mendez from Graves Engineering. I'm here on behalf of Auburn School Department regarding the project titled as Parking and Pavement. The project itself is proposed within the premises of Bryn Mawr Elementary School.
Do you mind taking your mask down or talking?
Okay, no problem.
I have a hard time hearing you. I don't know how it is online as well.
I'll take care of it.
We are distanced. Okay.
So, the project itself is proposed within the premises of the Bryn Mawr Elementary School. The project is comprised of two phases. Phase one will be the resurfacing of the existing parking lot with some site improvements. The site improvements themselves are comprised of relocating the existing dumpsters from the edge of the parking lot onto a new concrete pad. Also, improving stormwater mitigation on the property, or in that section of the property, I mean to say, with the installation of a riprap, line swale, and a sediment four bay. And I should also mention that in this particular phase of the property, there are impacts within the one hundred foot wetland buffer area. In doing so, we have filed a notice of intent with the Conservation Commission, and the work itself is really restricted within the buffer zone, not to the wetlands per se. And then Phase two of the project is comprised of the construction of the new parking lot on the easterly side of the property, and also the expansion of the playground area. The playground area is adjacent to the school building, so really the new expanded area will be pretty much to the school building. The actual parking lot itself is across the field, again, near the easterly lot line. The new parking lot will also require a new walkway. It will be about six hundred eighty-five feet long. The walkway will be about five feet wide. And also a new driveway of the twelve-foot width and about four hundred ninety feet long. The driveway will be connected from the new parking lot to the existing parking lot. And it goes along the perimeter of the fields or of the existing trees also. As part of the new parking lots, a new bio-retention area will be constructed. This will be to attend to the runoff that's produced as a result of the new construction. And overall itself, I guess, the intent of the project is to improve traffic conditions on Swanson Road that are usually observed during school hours, or excuse me, more so during drop-off and pickup times by providing a dedicated parking area for parents, as well as a queuing capacity for vehicles to pass through when they do pick up or drop off, and we envision that this will only be used during those particular times. And I guess that is probably it.
Do you have any questions on the board? Todd?
I didn't know if you wanted, can you hear me? I didn't know if you wanted Ronnie to go first, but I'm more than willing to go first if you'd like. Just a couple of questions for you. Along the walkway, the new walkway, adjacent to the park, leading from the new parking lot to the school, you're showing a Cape Cod berm. Is it possible to do a type A berm for that entire lane? Only because, as you know, the Cape Cod berm is sloped, so it makes it a lot easier for a car to accidentally pull up and mount the sidewalk in order to provide a better protection for the pedestrians. Probably be better if there was a, either a granite curbing would be ideal. I understand the cost implications of that, but if not, then the type three berm would be better. Sort of, you know, it's in your details. It's more the loaf berm, which makes it harder for a vehicle to mount it.
I think that's feasible. I can definitely look into it, but I think it's feasible.
The other question is just a minor detail for those who have kids who are cyclists. The bike rack that you're showing is not ideal. It's actually frowned upon in the industry with respect to if you're trying to service smaller bikes. It only provides one place of contact and doesn't work very well for smaller bikes that are seen at an elementary school or adjacent to a playground. So I didn't know if you could look at possibly doing a hoop rack and the inverted U instead?
Yeah, I can check into it.
And the last question I have might be a question for Adam. Has, has the town confirmed that doing this work would not trigger Article ninety-seven, which is protected parkland? Generally, it doesn't apply to parks and playgrounds. However, the S J C in two thousand seventeen considered a similar case where they were trying to make improvements for a school and an adjacent park in Westfield, and the S J C ruled that that does trigger Article ninety-seven.
That hasn't come up, but I can look into it.
Because this seems to have all the same hallmarks of that Westfield case. That's all I have for now. Thank you.
Two questions, maybe three questions. So, on, on sheet C one oh six or sheet seven, I'm just trying to understand where the phases differ. So this one shows Phase one to be on the left and then Phase two to be on the right, but the stormwater management system is part of Phase one, correct?
No, there's two parts of it, actually. Phase one itself, it's really, the stormwater improvements there for Phase one are really limited to, I'm installing a riprap, line swale on the westerly side of the parking lot with a sediment four bay. And Phase two has its own separate stormwater mitigation, with that being the bio-retention area. And I guess I tried depicting that with a thick dark line somewhere along the expanded parking, I mean, somewhere along the expanded playground area.
Okay. Then the second question is on the, the, the traffic coordination and timing here. So when Phase one gets underway, how would the, how would the school's existing traffic be monitored?
In that particular case, my understanding is that Phase one, since it's a resurfacing of the existing parking lot, it would be conducted during the summer, when the school, essentially during the school break, because of no need at the time for, you know, the parking. But that's my understanding of it with the school department. They would look to do that between the school years.
Okay, okay. And then the, the last question, and maybe this might be just minor, again, on one oh six or one oh five, the trash, the dumpster pad, so is the existing dumpsters will then be moved to that new concrete pad, right?
Yes, that is correct. It's just, we figured we'd have it outside the fringes of the one hundred foot buffer area for the wetlands, and we just wanted to have it outside of it, and we figured it would be best to install a new pad for that.
Okay.
Something that's a bit more durable for that kind of purpose.
Would there be any, any changes to the existing location of the pads, of the dumpsters today?
Actually, there are no pads at where the dumpsters are right now. They're just on the fringes, sort of like on a gravelly area. So we're just trying to, I guess, better situation on something that's, you know, might work.
Okay. That is all I have. Thank you.
Ron, did you have any questions?
I just wanted to ask, if I, the flow pattern is one way, is there any protection around the asphalt playground area of the road though? For the kids that are playing there, and these cars can obviously move in and out at any time. I don't see anything that allows kids to cross into the area or engage or affect.
Okay, if I understood correctly, it's, if there's any protection for the playground area. If I can try to show here, at the end of this driveway, we have.
Which page are you on?
Oh, sorry, on sheet C one oh three. At the end of the driveway, where about it meets the parking area, we are proposing a swing gate or a swing bargeate. The idea with that is that it'd be operated by the school, essentially the custodian. So it would be open only for the purposes of the school, drop off and pickup. So I guess when we see beyond that, weekends or evenings or something like, at the end of day, we anticipate that the bargeate would be closed. That way, there should be no vehicle circulation from the street all the way out. There shouldn't be able to pass through or is it cut through any time of that nature. So I believe that is what the question was referring to, but if I misunderstood, feel free to let me know.
Ron, did that answer your question?
Steve, I couldn't understand what he was saying.
Yep, so there's a manual gate planned to be operated by the custodian to stop flow of traffic on.
When the kids are out there?
Yep, so I'm just trying to think, so where the driveway ends and the existing parking lot begins, I think.
So it'd be like, if I. It'd be actually here.
So where, where the radius, the forty degree radius is on that plan at the end of the Cape Cod.
Yes. And Steve, I'm just curious. I didn't see anything that would.
So I didn't see it on the plan either.
On C one oh three, it references a sixteen-foot wide swing gate and post. Steve, detail.
Okay, sorry.
See that?
Did you have it?
See my other. I, I don't see it. I didn't see it anywhere on any. What was the exact need for these space way down at the east end of the parking of the playground?
Ron, you were cutting out. Can you try to repeat that?
I said, I'm just curious, because I see nothing in my stuff. Tell us, what was the need for these twenty-three additional spaces at this time?
Okay. So he's looking for the reason why we need the twenty-three additional spaces at this time?
I guess I don't fully know the answer to that question. I'd be, I'd probably more so from, I guess, a question perhaps handled by Mr. Fahey from the school department.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you very much. So obviously Ron did all the dirty work to answer most of your questions, but the purpose of, the real purpose of doing the two phases, I'll just be very brief. The first phase, we've had in our capital plan for over five years to resurface the existing parking lot that you see on, on section A. And as he said, we're moving the dumpster over about ten feet to get us out of that buffer zone as, as a, as a site improvement. The re, the reason why we're doing this whole parking lot project is, as it is right now, we currently have about fifty-eight to sixty staff members at Bryn Mawr School now, and parking lot spaces are roughly forty-seven. So we really don't have enough parking spaces to accommodate the staff and the visitors that come into Bryn Mawr School. And this really isn't because of COVID, but because of the continued people dropping off their students, parking, the drop-off area has been very congested. So we've had numerous concerns, safety concerns about all along Bryn Mawr Avenue, so much that we eliminated the parking on both sides with the cooperation of the police because of the danger that, that we, that we faced. So we thought it was best if we utilized an existing parking lot that was already established, because there's always been a parking lot in the lower part of Bryn Mawr where the baseball field is. So, so we thought at that time, well, rather than just put in a parking lot, let's put an access road in to connect the two, to take all the pressure off of the roads. So that, that queuing area that we're talking about can probably accommodate between thirty and forty vehicles. So that would take, so they would actually be queuing up either before school or after school. So that would take all that pressure off the roads to allow emergency vehicles to make, to make their turns a lot easier. Just the flow, we all been through it. So it would just, just make it a better and safer neighborhood. And it's also going to serve another purpose, because it will take the pressure off of the intermediate school, which is across the street, because currently we have people that park in that parking lot and walk their kids across the street into the intermediate school. So through the plans, you'll also see a blinking light. We have, Ron, I think we do.
No, actually.
Oh, we will now, because I just had it, right?
Well, that was about to be my question.
Yes, yes. So also, we're actually looking into some grants too with Safe Roots from School as well. So that way there, so it's kind of twofold. So we're resurrecting an old parking lot that's been there since I played T-ball, and now we're going to pave it. And by doing this, this retention area, it's also going to save the water. I'm sure the neighbor right in that corner would really appreciate it, because I believe over the years, he does have water that goes in to his property. So by having this, this retention area will certainly solve his problems there.
Thank you. Ron, did you have additional questions, or did that answer everything?
Yeah, Steve, yeah, I'll trust that you're listening well, because I, I just couldn't understand the word he was saying. I can hear you clearly, but I, I not understand anything he said. Just one other question, Steve. How long is the walkway from the middle of the parking area, say, up to where the teachers and students now would have to walk into the school? I can't see that one way.
I believe the overall length was six hundred and something?
About, the overall length is about six hundred eighty-five, being from more or less the street to the end. What area was he referring, from the middle?
Yeah, he's in the middle of the parking area to the school.
I would say.
But roughly from the middle. I mean, it's just, see, it's quite a walk in inclement weather.
So about five hundred and fifty feet, Ron?
Yeah, that's, it just seems like it's quite a walk in inclement weather, but I.
So I, I do believe that people currently park there and walk across the field.
Oh, really?
I haven't witnessed a lot of that, but I did witness about a week of activity on that, and people do that. I mean, obviously, it's winter time. It's a little bit tougher. I think this would make it safe.
Yeah, excuse me, through the chair.
Thank you.
I do see, you're right, they do cut across the fields in the nicer weather that they have. And in the winter time, it does get a little tough.
Ron, any additional questions?
I'm all set, thank you.
So I have a couple of questions. So you said it's going to be used for queuing, and cars are going to line up there, and it's twelve feet wide. What are we doing in an emergency if someone has an accident? There's no way to get in and out if cars are all queued up. Have you looked at expanding that or making an emergency lane for use in there?
I'll speak. I, I think we're, we're so concerned about taking away field space. I understand, obviously, safety is a top priority, and I think, I think one of the answers, and if we can do it, we certainly will, but we, we want to limit the amount of field space we're taking away. We felt that if a vehicle needed to get across or if a car did break down, you could certainly, you know, go up on the grass along the side of it and service it.
Yeah, that's my concern. I'd leave it for the police department or emergency personnel to weigh in on that. Then you mentioned the gate as well. If that gate's closed and someone pulls down, now they have to back up probably three hundred plus feet to get out.
Well, would, I think we'll be, obviously having signers there, and they wouldn't be, they wouldn't be backing out because they'd be queuing themselves up, so they'll know, whoever's, whoever's in this, this drop-off area is certainly going to know they're there for a reason.
At that time, but let's say it's off-hours or the gate didn't get opened back up after being closed. Someone could easily pull in, or someone's using the ball field and they see the sign that's one way, and they want to head down that road.
Sure, definitely.
So I don't know if the additional gate is required, or, again, for me, I don't know if it's a turnaround lane before that or some other way. So I have a few concerns with the queuing aspect and being stuck in there. But again, I'll leave it to.
Yeah, I was just going to suggest to them through the chair that perhaps relocating the gate to down here closer to the parking lot, so that that's the location where you, actually, because I was looking at that as well, where you stop the cars from coming down. Because I have the same concern that if that gate is closed, somebody's going down there thinking it's open. They're not going to know, twelve feet, you know, they're either going to be backing up pretty far, or they're going to be trying to pull a very tight U-turn.
Yeah.
So, so I think it's, it's to look to, you know, put the gate down by the parking lot instead of up by the school. It serves the same purpose. Either way, it just prevents you from getting all the way down there, then having to turn around.
I think that's a great point. I think honestly, at the time we designed this, we were more concerned about just the safety of the playground area. We didn't have the vision to think, okay, what if someone does come and they're not supposed to be here, and they come down?
So additionally, I think Ron was trying to bring this up with a crosswalk. There's no crosswalk shown, even though the gate's closed. Is there a common path of travel that will leave from the school directly across? Is there a way to detail that or mark that out on the plan? So people aren't coming out of the school, taking a left or right, going diagonal across what would be a driveline? Like to see something like that. And again, I, I would like to see what the safety personnel would say with that driveline being twelve feet wide. It doesn't happen often, but when it does happen, it becomes a problem. If they're okay with it, then I guess I wouldn't necessarily have any objections. I don't think there's specific rules on that, right? Meets the requirements.
That's a great point, and as far as, to answer your question, as far as people going one way, people going the other in the morning for the drop off or pickup, they would have, this would be set up similar to the intermediate school where they have an overabundance of staff out there, making sure that these, these are catered to. So they're not going to be, they're not going to be running through the cars, but however, it could be apparent from time to time. So, but I think they're going to, the plan is to have staff obviously flood that area during those times.
And then where the new asphalt's going, is it, it's budding right up to the existing? Is it going to be seamless, or is there going to be a curve there?
No curve. It's going to go right up, right up.
It'll be.
An extension.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's really the only, we're doing that for two reasons. One, for the queue, and most importantly, we're doing it for a larger surface for the kids to actually have their recess. If you ever go by there now, we've tried over the years to plant, plant grass, to do anything, but nothing seems to grow underneath there except, except rocks. And the kids love to, you know, trip and throw on the rocks and fall. So we think this is the best option we could do. So we're going to get it up to as close as we can to the trees.
I'll open it back up to any board members.
Yeah, just going back to the crosswalk on Swanson Road, considering the number of pedestrians you have back and forth now, and you think it's going to actually increase now with the improvements, I would like to ask that you consider, you know, at a minimum, an in-street pedestrian crossing station, the M U T C D R one dash six, but preferably the, like you said, the flashing lights, the rectangular rapid flash beacons, which are pedestrian-actuated. They cost, you know, you can get them solar powered so that there's no jar on the electricity, and they cost around twenty thousand. So it's short money to ensure pedestrian safety in a school zone. And there are grants, there's the Safe Roots of School grants. There's also the, the Mass Dot Shared Streets and Spaces grants that's looking to fund these types of things. There's also the, um, the MassDOT, uh, Shared Streets and Spaces grants, um, that's looking to fund these types of things.
Chair, one question, I think going back to, uh, Ron's comment. Uh, would there be crosswalks in the travel lane, in the new travel lane, uh, on the, I think on the.
So I think.
Yeah, say drive.
Yeah.
Yeah, in the drive, yeah.
Essentially where it butts up to the existing asphalt. Um, uh, that's kind of my question was to ask, would we be doing crosswalks to make sure they could get across that to the fields?
No, I didn't, uh, no, I didn't envision that.
Anyone from the public have any comments? Uh, yep, you wanna come up to the seat here, state your name please and address?
Robert Lynch, eighteen Granview Street. So if you flip the sheet over, um, my backyard butts that proposed street.
Okay.
And I was just wondering, could I get any answer on how close the street will be to the woods? Not the property line, but the woods. And if you notice, there's a fence already there. So that would be the same location that I'm talking about.
So, so I assume we could probably give a guesstimate, but pretty much they would go to the property line.
So.
So he's gonna roughly measure that?
Okay, so this being that it's a fence that we're saying, um, the tree line won't be really taking much, but according to the scale, about ten feet.
So my desire would to be, is there any reason we can push it another ten, fifteen feet? I know you don't wanna take field up, but let me say first, is that a one-way street?
It's proposed.
It's proposed as one-way.
To go and out to the parking lot?
To, no.
Go towards the school.
To come in from behind the fields to the school and then from the school out.
Okay. And if you can move the, um, the street, what's preventing cars from parking there after hours, like to watch their kids play a ballgame?
I don't think there's anything preventing them after hours. Um, I think people park there currently.
They do. And I, that's my backyard and that's, you know, your backyard supposed to be your privacy. So I understand, I bought a house next to a school. I'm okay with the kids. I'm okay with the school bells. But to see cars there parked, we can't put up a fence there or anything along right where the trees are?
So we can certainly ask, I think they're within their rights to building where it is from the property line?
No, I understand that, yeah.
Um, I don't know if we can require it, but we can certainly ask that they look into some fencing or, um, again, I don't know what the tree line is like. I would assume it's pretty bare right now, um, but does it fill in?
It fills and you can't see, but during the.
During the winter, which, okay.
And the only other question I had, um, is the walkway right next to the street? I didn't understand where the walkway is gonna be.
So it, it'd be like, uh, your normal road with a sidewalk attached right there. There's.
So the street will be closer to the woods and then the walkway or is the walkway next to the woods?
No, so the walkway is next to the fields or that, that's how it's proposed.
Yeah.
And I think the main reason would be, and I'll let them speak to it, but if it's on the other side, then you have people crossing the lane of travel from the parking lot to get in there. And I think they were trying to minimize that. But do you guys have any comments of why the?
You're absolutely right.
The accessibility was also, um, you know, if you wanted to be in the, with this baseball field, they could, you know, have access on this side over here, I guess, you know, walk, but not really go across the pavement.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't anticipate the park, the sidewalk to go on the other side of the road because that's where the snow's gonna get pushed in the winter time. So that's why the park, the sidewalk has always been, you know, in the inside perimeter.
So we, we did ask them to move the gate to stop traffic flow. And if school's not in session, I would assume we could have that gate closed, which would prevent people from parking on that section of it, but not in the parking lot.
And that's the part I wasn't following. So where's the gate gonna be now on the, um, closer to the parking lot?
So.
Yeah, at the end of the parking lot. Uh, ideally, if that are controlling traffic, if people don't go, it'd be at the end of the parking lot over here. So nobody travels.
And if people have turned around, they can turn around there.
In the parking lot.
Okay.
They would turn around in the parking lot of this area, like, uh.
And obviously through the chair, we'll be having signage too. Signage will be all over there stating that, stating that it's only to be used during school hours, school drop off and pickup time. So you, you will not be having cars queuing up.
So a car would not be able to enter where the playground is, cause it's the wrong way? The car wouldn't be able to come in from the playground and enter towards the parking way, cause that's the wrong way?
So I guess they could, but it's one-way directional and that would not, they wouldn't be following the rules and it's hard to.
Okay. All right.
To do what they're supposed to do, I guess. I mean, I don't know what enforcement mechanisms are for that after hours.
I just wanted to know the, I, the direction.
The direction, well, they will be called, called out directionally. Um, will you have, uh, arrows on the roadway itself?
Yes, we do have, uh, some proposed, um, I know we've shown over here one way, uh, you know, you know.
And they're also showing a do not enter sign as well.
Yes. Um, there is one at the, I forget where.
Further up.
Part of our.
Yeah, it, it's up, it's up closer to the school, right at the, where the driveway exits out to the parade yard.
And, um, you were talking about the curbs. Is there gonna be a curb on both sides of the street driveway or?
Looks like they're just proposing one on the, on the walk side.
Yes, that's correct.
So theoretically, a car wouldn't be able to park perpendicular to, if they was watching a ballgame is what I'm getting at.
Well, the gate's gonna prevent them from even going down there during off hours.
Okay. I still like to see a fence, but I'll leave it up to you.
We can certainly ask, is there opposition to putting a fence along that? Is there?
Being about sixty feet from the edge of the highway to the property corner through wooded area.
I gotta believe Cross would obviously come into play in this as well.
Okay.
Ron, Ron, Adam, is there, is there any plans to change the tree line? Would that, would that help in any way?
No, we didn't plan on, uh, changing it. Just saving wherever necessary, but not really the credit to it.
Okay.
So the e- existing chain link fence is, where does that end?
Uh, I guess it's about here, if you can, well, let's tell. Um, it's on the page C one oh three, uh, there's, um, R two nine, there's like a painted traffic mark.
Where it says tree line?
Yes, we're saying tree line. Uh, there's a line X, with X's across. For that line end, I guess we have the end of the fence.
Okay.
So there is an existing fence?
Right.
And you're, you're looking for more privacy, is that?
Well, that fence is a chain link. If we could get something where I don't have to see a row of cars, but just a wish.
Uh, yep, we can certainly see if, if there's a, a reason, we can continue to ask. I, I can't force them to do it, cause they're within their rights, but.
I only say that because like in October, there were cars parked up there and it wasn't a ballgame or nothing. I think it was during drop off times. And a guy had his hood open, like the, his hood. And then I go up in the woods a week later and there's an oil thing. I mean, was it him? I don't know. But just something you don't like to look at in your backyard.
Yeah, no, I, I one hundred percent agree with you. I, I, again, if they're breaking the laws, there is other remedies on that. Um, we can only hold them to what the bylaws allow us to.
I understand.
And they're within their rights. We've asked, I, I don't think they're gonna change their mind on this, but we can bring it up. Uh, so we probably will continue this hearing. Um, we still are waiting on, uh, the stormwater. You guys have to go through conservation still? That, have you submitted to conservation?
Yes, uh, we did submit to the Conservation Commission. Uh, we had a hearing on January twenty-sixth. Um, and, uh, it has been continued to February twenty.
Twenty-eighth, I believe.
Twenty-sixth, I believe, or twenty.
Twenty-sixth or twenty-eighth.
Somewhere that's true.
They would've, they would've rather, um, uh, do a walkthrough of the, of the site.
Yeah.
And they weren't able to do that because of the weather.
Yeah, it was right, it was right before the snowstorm that we have at the end of January, so.
Okay. So we, we'd still be waiting on that. There's still potential to change some of the layout. Um, and we can, again, work with them to make the revisions as long as it's within the guidelines, so.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, is there any additional comment from the public?
Any on the computer?
Anyone online?
Steve, it's Ronnie.
Hi, Ron. Go ahead.
I just wanna say that all these neighbors that bought an entire property have been there for a long time and they didn't have to suffer any negative consequence because of this.
Yep, I agree. We'll, we'll continue to work with them, Ron. Make sure that everyone has a positive outcome or as many people as possible.
Sure. Can I make a suggestion? Um, one suggestion maybe, maybe is to, you know, think of the, uh, uh, the gate that we're, we are looking to move, um, to have the second gate still at the same spot that you proposed. Maybe that might be a double, you know, a, a two-way, um, blockage for people during off hours. Something to think about, I guess, a suggestion.
That's actually a great, it's a great suggestion, cause I could, I can vision it happen on the weekend, coming the other way. So it's, it's, it's a great suggestion.
Okay. Anyone else online have any comments? Anyone else in the audience? Yes, sir.
Just the, the two gates would satisfy that.
Excellent. And I think Ron's happy if you're happy. Appreciate that. All right. So I'll look for a motion to continue this until we, uh, see the stormwater and share about conservation, see if any adjustments need to be made.
Yeah, I'll make that motion. I'd also like to.
February twenty-second will be the next meeting.
Is that, will conservation have met by then?
Well, we don't really have to wait for conservation. It's more the, it's, it's the, um, earth disturbance that we're waiting on the stormwater.
Okay.
They submitted to DPW, uh, a while back and I know they had some suggested changes. I don't know exactly what they were, but we'd wanna see those on the plans, whatever those changes are.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion, but I'd also like to get clarification by that date for the Article ninety-seven decision, uh, whether this trips Article ninety-seven or not, as well as to see revised plans, uh, addressing some of the comments that we made tonight.
Do we have a second?
I'll make a second.
All right. All those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Barkin?
Aye.
And myself, Steve Chambers, that's an aye. So we'll continue to the twenty-second. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda is, uh, applicant Fazan Management, Inc. Requesting site plan approval under section three point two, point two, point two of the Auburn zoning bylaw for twelve townhouses at two sixty-two Central Street, Auburn, Mass. Oh, one, five, oh, one, map fifty-six, parcel eighty-seven. This meeting's been continued from our, uh, January eleventh, two thousand twenty-two meeting. It's the applicant here.
They've, they're still waiting on ZBA approvals. They have ZBA Thursday, so they requested a continuance until March eighth.
Okay. Do we have a motion to continue to March eighth?
I'll make that motion.
I'll make that motion, Steve.
All right. Ron made the motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Excellent. Todd's second. All those in favor, uh, Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Barkin?
Aye.
Myself, Steve, is an aye. Excellent. Uh, now we move on to other business. Um, anyone have anything for discussion? We'll go to the modification, uh, Commerce Drive subdivision. Do we have anyone here or?
Um, they're on, online.
All right.
Uh, yep, uh, good evening, uh, Mr. Ronnie's Chair. This is Clay Williams from Eastland Partners.
Good evening.
Uh, it's Clay, oh, they're singing, sorry. Can you hear me okay?
As well as technology lets us, yeah.
Okay. Um, so you all should be in receipt of a letter I sent in, uh, about three weeks ago, requesting a minor modification to change our electric service from underground wires to overhead tension wires. Um, this request came directly from National Grid. They currently have plans for some, uh, line work along Route twenty. Requested, uh, we supply the site with, for operational and, um, you know, time management reasons.
Does anyone have any comments? Todd?
Um, I mean, you know, I, I'm willing to support this. I just, I find it interesting that we're, it seems to be going backwards. A lot of people are trying to move wiring underground because it's less susceptible to weather conditions and outages. And here we are, kinda going in reverse. But since the developer is supportive and National Grid is recommending it, I'll vote yes.
Chair, I have a question. So, um, Clayton, is there, uh, and maybe that's covered under the, the, uh, ESP seven fifty. Is there a clearance required, um, because it's an overhead line?
In terms of clearance from the street?
Even, so clearance around the line itself. Uh, is there any spacing distance, uh, that's required?
Yeah, so, um, of course, you know, after the mission date for this meeting, we got a plan from Grid, um, that if I can share my, you guys, uh, do that, Adam?
Can they share their screen?
Oh, yeah. Let me see. Find out.
Okay. Uh, so you should be able to see this up on your screen. Um, I guess I'll just explain it for those calling in. So here we have a view of Lot one and Jack Drive, uh, Commerce Drive. This red line here, um, denotes where the line will run as you, it crosses the street, uh, twice. I don't know, the poles are placed, um, adjacent to the curb line, uh, that fourth in that ESP seven fifty. So there's plenty of clearance. Uh, obviously they're gonna be high enough where any vehicles accessing these development lots, you know, are gonna hit no lines. Um, National Grid is diligent about that sort of stuff. There's, uh, you know, they won't interfere with our street trees, um, squeeze plates with their rules and regulations.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Chair, can I just make clarification? You kinda broke up there. You said it's not gonna affect any of the street trees, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Ron, did you have any questions or comments?
I just wanted to ask Clay, what, what, what is the reason that National Grid wants to put them above the, the rest of the below?
Uh, for operational purposes. A, it's easier, it's quicker and they're already planning work to the existing, uh, power lines. So it would make sense for them just to connect overhead, um, instead of digging through the road to put in conduits.
It's cheaper.
Thank you. Yeah, it's cheaper.
So, uh.
Thank you.
Are we allowed to ask for receipt from National Grid saying they requested this?
Um, you can, yes, yeah.
Okay. I, I just wanna make sure, you know, I, not that I don't trust you guys to do it, but if they're the ones requesting it, if, I think I would like to see their request cause, um, obviously I'm not the one supplying the power and if that's the way they say they wanna do it, there's not much more I, I can say against it. Um, I am, I prefer it underground, but again, I, I won't be delivering power to this site. Would you guys be willing to share the, um, that notification or request from National Grid?
Uh, sure. Uh, sure. I I don't have a copy of it. Um, Chad or Ops Manager is the one dealing with National Grid. But that's something that, you know, I can forward you guys the email and them, uh, correspondents we have.
Okay. Anyone else have any? Okay, Ron, did you have any more questions or comments?
I'll, I'll say.
Okay, um, I'd make a motion to, uh, accept this, uh, or. Take a motion to accept it as a minor modification.
So I'll make the motion, uh, to accept this as a minor modification on the condition that, uh, the petitioner submits the, uh, evidence from National Grid requesting this to Adam.
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
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 And Steve Chambers is an aye. So that's a minor modification. Do we have to take a separate vote on? Okay, so then I think we. Let's back that up. Let's take a vote on the minor modification piece only. Do we have a motion?
I'll make that motion, Steve.
Thank you, Ron. Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Excellent, so roll call vote, Ron? How do you vote?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Parket?
Aye.
Myself, Steve Chambers is an aye. It is a minor modification. Okay, now for approval of the minor modification.
I'll move approval with the same language.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Ron, how do you vote on the, uh, language of the approval?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Steve Chambers is an aye. Yeah, that was a little confusing. So, yeah, upon receipt, um, if you get that to Adam. Um, then we have no further issues with this.
Wonderful. Uh, thank you, everyone. Um, I'll be, I'll forward that over tomorrow. Anything else you need, uh, let me know.
Excellent, thank you.
Wonderful. Have a good night, everyone.
So you as well. Uh, moving on to, uh, minutes, so, uh. Minutes from one one, two thousand twenty-two. Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion for approval.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Parket?
Aye.
And I abstain. Great, uh, any new business unforeseen by me? I'm gonna say no. Does anyone else have anything? Ron, do you have anything further?
No, thank you.
Okay. Adam, anything from you, any updates?
Just one small thing, um, we've been discussing raising the mailing fee, um, for the abutters. It's currently, it's a dollar. That really doesn't cover the expenses. Um, postage is fifty-eight cents. And we gotta mail two notifications for every decision once, once the public hearing and once when there's a decision. So we're already over budget without counting paper and ink and stuff. So we're looking to double it to two dollars. So if the board doesn't have any issues, we'll go ahead and do that. You wanna make a?
What, what kind of noted, is it just one letter that goes out? It's never more than the two notices. They're not getting additional items or?
Not normally. Uh, we also notify the surrounding towns as well as CMR PC, so there's also that. Hidden, kind of, a lot of hidden costs, but it's not an obvious cost.
Okay, I I wouldn't be looking to make money, but I don't want us to lose money, so as long as we're covering the costs. I'll be okay with that. Anyone have any objections?
No, as long as we're covering all the costs, factor in staff time, paper, everything.
Ron, do you have any concerns with them increasing the cost for, uh, mailings to abutters?
No.
Okay. All right, then we're good with that.
Sounds good.
All right, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Steve, Steve, can I just ask one thing about that?
Absolutely.
Adam, we're not under any time constraints or anything with two sixty-two Central Street, are we?
No, they have, um, signed the continuance forms. I've been selling them on a regular basis, so we should be covered.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor, Ron?
Aye.
Todd?
Aye.
Parket?
Aye.
Myself, Steve Chambers is an aye. Have a good evening.